...everyone of you for coming out today. This is the Community Issues Committee meeting. And this is somewhat similar to a meeting we'd have at City Hall. And obviously, City Hall wouldn't be conducive for something like this. And that's why we have the Yates today. Now, the Yates is actually at full capacity right now. And anyone who else is coming and knocking on doors, they're going to be directed to go to City Hall. And if you didn't get to City Hall, this is also being streamed live on the City of Lepbridge website. And if you have an opportunity, it's also going to be recorded, so you'll be able to view it at any time. It'll be all on there, probably by the end of this meeting, I'll be live on there for you as well, and recorded. Council's meeting, as a community issues committee, we do this periodically to gather information relating issues to our city which are great importance. When we meet as a community issues committee, we don't take votes or make formal decisions. We attempt to gather as much information as possible. I think it's widely known by now that Lepbridge City Council is opposed to urban drilling. We believe the presence of new well sites and pipelines would effectively sterilize portions of urban land where we plan to develop neighborhoods in the future. So we believe those activities are incompatible within our urban boundaries. The problem for us, the City Council, is that the current regulatory framework in Alberta gives cities virtually no say on whether drilling activity should happen within their urban boundaries. People in our community have lots of different questions about urban drilling and how it affects their lives. At the end of the night, we hope that people will feel confident that they are much better informed about this issue. Although we are aware that Golden Key Oil intends to seek approval to drill oil in West Lepbridge, council is not conducting this meeting to debate the merits of that or any other specific proposal. For us, the issue is bigger than a proposal by Golden Key or any other company that may come along. We've heard many questions from the community. Our intent this evening is to address as many of these questions as possible through the course of presentations from our panel, members of Lepbridge City Council, and of course yourselves. To make the best of our panelists, we're going to be focusing on the questions...to make the best of our panelists, we are focusing on questions that this panel is best suited and qualified to answer. That will form the first part of our meeting. After a short break, the audience will have the opportunity to pose questions that have not been addressed. And I will also deal with unaddressed questions submitted in advance. Now, first of all, since we are in similar council chambers, I know a lot of you are very, very passionate about that, and I respect that fact. But I would just ask that we be respectful of our panelists, respectful of the people asking questions. I really want to emphasize, we shouldn't get into cheering or booing. This is an opportunity for us to be informed. Okay, hey, who is that? And I know that there's a lot of signs, and they're not all saying Team Canada, but anyway. But if you can be somewhat respectful with your signs and not blocking people's views, but I also respect that you have the right to have your signs, and you're allowed to have your pins, and we appreciate that. It's the Democratic Society, and we encourage that. First of all, I'm going to introduce members of City Council here. Of course, I'm Deputy Mayor, and the question you may be asking is, why am I chairing this meeting? Because of our process or procedures that we have in place, the CIC is usually chaired by the Deputy Mayor. So that's why I'm sitting as the moderator/chair of today's meeting. To my far right is Counselor Blaine Higgin. And if you could, I just can't see right across here. And then, of course, Mayor Spearman, Counselor Carlson, Counselor Iwaskew, Counselor Miasiro, and Counselor Coffin. This lady to our right is the City Clerk, and she's kind of helping making sure that I run the meeting in a nice orderly fashion, and if questions come forward, that they're asked, and she's just going to help me keep me in line here, because I am a little nervous because I care, but hopefully everyone can hear me, and hopefully I don't speak too fast. If my mom's here in the audience, she'll say, "Slow down," so... All right, just a reminder as well that you should have your phones on vibrate, so just make sure our phones don't go off. Emergency exits, as you can see, are easily marked. There's two in the back of the theater, one to my stage left and one to my stage right, so in case there is an emergency. In regards to process for tonight's meeting, first of all, I'm going to have the approval of the minutes, which I have signed by Alderman or Counselor Iwaskew, that the minutes of the Community Issues Committee meeting held on Monday, April 22, 2013, be approved, and that the Mayor and the city be authorized to sign. Members of council, all those in favor? Yes. I have the following resolution signed by Counselor Iwaskew as well, that the agenda of the Community Issues Committee be adopted as amended, including all communications as presented by the City Clerk be laid on the table for further consideration. All in favor? Thank you. So this is how it's going to work this evening. And I don't know how long tonight's going to go, but if we have to go all night, we will go all night. But we'll try to be respectful of one's time as well, so... First of all, we are going to have a presentation from our panelists on the left side here. And before I get to introductions, after we hear all the panelists, we will then have questions from members of City Council. After those questions have been asked, we'll be taking a break. Now, we do have the break scheduled around 8:30, but of course, we're usually on council time, so give or take three hours. But hopefully, we can stick to those timelines of 8:30 for our break. At 8:45 after the break, we'll have questions from the floor, which I will also involve the questions that have come in in writing as well. So we'll explain that later on as the meeting moves on. Now I'll introduce our panel. Our members are from...in regards to the issue of tenure and how mineral leases are awarded, it'll be Brenda Pondy. Brenda, if you can raise your hand for us? Thank you. In regards to drilling processes, we have Dr. Douglas Schmidt. In regards to regulatory framework and public safety, Bob Willard. From public health, Dr. Brent Friesen. Municipal responsibilities and jurisdiction issues will be Mr. Jeff Green. And of course, regarding safety, will be our chief, Ryan Cornforth. Before Brenda speaks, I will just do a brief synopsis of Brenda, so you have a little more context of who she is and what she does. Brenda Pondy is the Executive Director of the Tenure Branch in Alberta Energy and leads the management of petroleum and natural gas mineral rights for Alberta. Brenda has over 35 years' experience in land tenure, working with the Alberta Government, as well as seismic consulting firm, and in the Land Department of Oil and Gas Exploration Company. She appreciates the diversity her role provides and enjoys sharing her knowledge and experience with others seeking information on tenure in Alberta. Brenda, welcome, and thank you very much, Ms. Pondy.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to explain how the Tenure Branch administers petroleum and natural gas mineral rights in Alberta for Albertans. People sometimes ask us, "What is tenure?" And we define tenure as the holding of property, and in this case, that would be the petroleum and natural gas mineral rights that are held. So tonight, when I'm talking and I say mineral rights, or I might just say rights, I just want to be clear that I'm just referring to petroleum and natural gas, which I'll also probably call P N G. And not coal or oil sands, just the P N G. So first, I'd like to start by showing you what belongs to Albertans. This map illustrates the dispersal of Alberta Crown lands, the freehold land, and also federal Crown land. You can see all of the yellow and the pink, at least I hope that's how it shows from the side. It's looking green and purple, so hopefully it looks yellow and pink. But the Alberta Crown, meaning what we citizens own, we own 81% of the province's mineral rights. The remaining 19% are freehold mineral rights owned by the federal government on behalf of First Nations or in the national parks, and by some individuals, and mostly by private companies. When Alberta was first settled in the late 1980s, homesteaders received both the surface and subsurface mineral ownership, until the Government of Canada determined that, hmm, these minerals were valuable, and so they stopped granting the subsurface rights to the homesteaders and instead reserved them for the federal Crown minerals. The mineral rights that were granted to the Hudson's Bay Company and the CPR Railway way back in time now belong to some of the larger oil and gas companies. Although Alberta became a province in 1905, Canada only transferred ownership of the minerals via the Natural Resources Transfer Act in September 1930. So this is when Alberta got control over their resources. Just a bit on the administration of the P N G mineral rights. So for exploring and developing P N G rights in Alberta, we issue either a license or a lease agreement. There are currently approximately 92,000 active agreements at this time that our Tenure Branch monitors and maintains. These agreements grant the holder the right to drill for, win, work, and recover leased resources. Both licenses and leases are acquired through what we call a land sale. Although we commonly use the term "land sale," we don't actually sell the mineral rights, but rather we lease them just for a specific term. So as you can see on the slide, licenses, in their initial term, have either a two-, four- or five-year lease term, depending on where in the province they're located, in the plains, the northern, and the foothills. The reason for the differing amount of time is due in part to surface accessibility and topography of our province. For example, northern areas often can't be worked in until the grounds are frozen, whereas in the plains area, accessibility is often available year-round. At the end of the initial term of the license, we review the file to see what activity was conducted and determine, according to various regulatory criteria, what amount of land qualifies to convert into an intermediate-term license. So an intermediate-term license and a lease both have a five-year term, and they carry the exact same obligations for further continuation. At the end of this term, the file is reviewed to determine what lands or rights might be proven productive. Each agreement type gives the lessie a specific window of time to do what they need to meet regulatory obligations. Rights in an agreement that are determined nonproductive are canceled and returned to the land bank for potential resale again. Leasing of rights is complicated. As the subsurface is made up of many different layers, we refer to those layers as zones or formations. So these formations have names such as the ones in the diagram. You can see there's a Belly River, a Nisku, a Laduke, as some examples. So the illustration depicts how there can be several agreements underlying one section of surface land, and that makes up part of the complexity. If mineral rights are undisposed, that's a term that we refer to, meaning they are not leased to anyone, then they would be available for sale, and they can be posted. So I just want to show you...see if this shows up here? This first portion here is an example of undisposed mineral rights. This section here, though, we're calling it "leasee," as it's got below the base of the Belly River to the base of the Nisku Zone. And then we go over here, and there's a small portion here that is undisposed again, and this portion here also belongs to another lease. So that's how it does work in Alberta, and it's very common. So a little bit on how the land sale works. It's an automated competitive bid system, and it's an auction that's conducted by the Tenure Branch about every two weeks. Normally, it's every second Wednesday throughout the year. On average, we hold 24 land sales a year and issue approximately 6,000 petroleum and natural gas agreements, both leases and licenses. That averages to about 250 parcels per sale. Each sale has a 17-week cycle. The first two-week period is when industry requests lands they want posted for sale. Postings are initiated by the industry. The Crown does not put up lands for sale. Each group of lands that is requested, we refer to as a parcel. Then we take the next seven weeks to do a big review. So Alberta Energy has time to review the lands, and we refer all of the parcels to a committee that's called the Crown Mineral Disposition Review Committee. This committee is made up of several government departments. They review the land to ensure that the correct type and level of restriction is placed on the land. Some of the restrictions might say restricted access, or they might say no access, or there might not be a restriction. At the end of the seven weeks, then, we issue a public offering notice. We make that public, and it advertises all the parcels that will be coming up in the next land sale, which follows in eight weeks' time. Industry then uses those eight weeks for their bidding strategy. They determine which parcels they want to bid on, how they want to build, do they need partners. They conduct research, look at what access there might be, and just basically determine whether or not they want to compete in the bid. So after the eight weeks is done, we hold the sale, and with automation, the actual processing takes only a few minutes. The parcel is awarded to the highest bidder, and the results are published the same day. In the published results, you would see who the successful bidder was and how much their bonus bid, as we call it, how much they paid for it. Each sale brings in millions of dollars. For example, in 2013, the year brought in about $679 million. And when the economy was even more active, in 2012, the revenue was $1.1 billion. And in 2011, that was the record highest year for a land sale ever of $3.5 billion. You can view mineral rights agreement ownership, if you wish, by visiting our sales results map, which is on our Alberta Energy webpage. There is a link in the handout to our website, and you go under our business and services to see the map. So clicking on portions of the map wherever you're interested in looking will show the Crown rights that are available, so the undisposed Crown rights, any active Crown agreements, and it also shows freehold ownership across the province. In addition to industry paying a bonus for bidding at the sale, each agreement is also charged a $625 issuance fee and is subject to a yearly rental of $350 per hectare. In summary, our tenure process is a reiterative cycle that ensures continued activity for Alberta. At the top of the slide, you'll see the rights are posted, and we issue the agreements. And then to the right, the lessie does their exploration and develops the lands and rights. At the bottom, there is the review of productive P N G rights when the agreements expire. And then over in the red, we would continue any productive rights, and we would cancel any nonproductive rights, putting them back to the land bank for potential resale. In the middle, I put in there continual monitoring of agreements, because there's a lot of processes that go on behind the scenes throughout the Tenure Branch to also take care of all those other 92,000 existing agreements. So we make sure that our processes and decisions are fair, transparent, and consistent. Alberta's tenure system is actually world-renowned. Each year, we're visited by several foreign delegations, asking us for presentations on how do you administer P N G mineral rights in Alberta. So to finish, I hope that this gives you a bit more understanding of how P N G rights are acquired in Alberta, and I thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, Ms. Pondy. Each of these presenters have a presentation, and we'll have a link to all their presentations via the City of Lepbridge website. So just in case you do want a hard copy, or you want to download it, or just see it online, we will be offering it via the City of Lepbridge website. Our next presenter regarding drilling processes is Dr. Douglas Schmidt. Dr. Schmidt is a Canada Research Chair in Rock Physics at the University of Alberta, a professional geophysicist registered under APega, and a professor of geophysics and physics at the University of Alberta. His research interests span rock properties, seismology, and crustal stress measurement. He has carried out field studies in scientific drilling on five continents and led the team that carried out the first micro-frack stress measurement in Antarctica. Prior to joining the University of Alberta in 1989, he carried out his postdoctoral research in geo-mechanics of hydraulic fracturing in the Department of Geophysics at Stanford University from 1987 to 88. He is a graduate of the University of Lepbridge...
Woo-hoo!
...with a Bachelor of Science in Physics in 1980, and the Seismological Laboratory of California Institute of Technology. Welcome, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. So thanks for having me, and I'll...what I'm here to do is try and give the science as best as I know it, to my experience in drilling and in geophysics. And so I think I have a little different perspective than a lot of people, because a geophysicist might see the bigger scheme of things, because we're used to looking at images of the earth, and we're used to looking at the forces in the earth and what their properties are then. So I'll try and give you my perspective from that, and I think that's maybe why I was invited. So what I want to do, now how do I make this work?
The left.
The left? The left button goes forward? Okay. So an overview, what I want to do here is just first give you a little bit of, you know, what the local geological context is, to give you an idea of the scales that we might be looking at things. Then I want to talk about how boreholes are drilled and how they're completed, and what are some of the things that can go wrong or go right with that. And then just a little bit overview of what hydraulic fracturing is itself, and try and give you a feel for that. And then I'll try and address some of these public concerns. I know that two of them here in Lethbridge have been the groundwater protection, and another one, questions have been asked about induced seismicity. But I mean, there's many issues, and I'm not going to be able to cover everything. And some of this will be at probably quite an elementary level, but I'd be happy to discuss details later if you wish, or try to help you find more information. So...oh, wrong way again. Doesn't seem to...
The back one.
Oh, that one. Okay. So let's look at geology in Lethbridge, just so you have an idea. I'm not going to talk about any particular project or that, but just so you have an idea what might scales be. So standing right beneath our feet, there's a big section of rock, about 150 to 70 million years old, and that's Mesozoic Age. And I took this over in Paradise Valley yesterday, you can see that. That's the...called the Bear Paw Formation, and beneath it is what's something called the Old Man Formation. And those rocks are shales, okay? And they're pretty impermeable rocks, as a lot of you know. It's hard to get fluids through them. Other rocks here, that's the Milk River Sandstone, that a lot of you will be familiar with, right? That's supposed to be yellow, not brown, and are this. So this whole section here, which is about 1.4 kilometers deep beneath Lethbridge, is basically a whole bunch of different layers of these kind of shales and these kind of sandstones. And a lot of the petroleum is in the sandstones, and gases, and the shales basically hold those in. They're impermeable. Those oils wouldn't be there if those shales weren't so impermeable. There's a lot of other fluids down there, too. Most of the fluids are brines, very salty water, okay? If we go down here, now 1.4 kilometers to almost 3 kilometers down, we have these rocks. Oops. Oh, sorry. And now, of course, the color on that, but that's Crow's Nest Mountain that a lot of you have seen, right? So all those mountains, most of them, just north of Waterton, are basically the same rocks that are down 1.5, 1.4 kilometers beneath us. So they're all really hard carbonate rocks. And beneath that, we have the Canadian Shield, which is called the basement quite often. And that's metamorphic rock, there's usually no oils in that. It's very hard, granitic-like stuff. So that's just an idea of what the geology looks like. The gas that's being taken out around is around here, about a kilometer down, west of town. Other projects that we're looking at in the area now are down in here. Oops, sorry. Okay, let's get an idea of scale. Everybody knows this. This is a nice old picture of the bridge, taken circa 1910-something. And the height of that, everyone knows, is about 95 meters, right? Longest, highest, or highest-longest, I can't remember, bridge in the world, right? And its length is about a mile, 1.62 kilometers. So let's put that into the context of what we're looking at. Again, here's the Mesozoic, the young rocks relatively, and they're...that's 1.4, right? So there's the length of the Lethbridge Bridge. Now, as we go down here, here's two lengths of the Lethbridge Bridge, right? So we're looking at quite a ways down there. There's a big chunk of rock, and I know that, even for me, that's a hard thing to get your scale around, right? So when something's beneath us, it can be quite deep. And these rocks here are all very hard carbonates that make up the mountains. That's why they're mountains, they're still standing. The rocks that were thrown around during the building of the Rocky Mountains, they were...of these rocks, they're the foothills, they've eroded away and made things soft. But anyways, again, there's shales and there's sands in here, and some of them are pretty impermeable, and that's why these fluids are down in there for millions of years. Okay, so that's the local context, and I'll try and put that drilling into it later. But first, how is drilling carried out? Now, this is a grossly oversimplified view. What I want to try and give you is a feel for what the processes are and what is drilling and completion, right? These are just my little PowerPoint animations. You can go to the web and find beautiful three-dimensional things, many of them, right? So please forgive me, but I want to give a feel for what's actually happening. So first, I also...this is not the scale, but we're just throwing a cross-section of the earth, looking at it. And one thing that's going to come up again is something called the protected groundwater. That's 365 meters deep. That's a...below this level is where the resources can be taken from. Above this level has to be protected, right? The waters may or may not be good in that zone, the groundwaters, but that is what is required of this area, as far as I know. That has to be protected from beneath. So to drill a borehole, first you drill a big hole, maybe about 15 inches in diameter, and then you put steel pipe in it, and then you pump cement into that. This is called completing it, okay? And you fill it up, and then you have this. This is called a surface casing, and that's cemented, and that's to protect basically the fluids that are going to be flowing in and out of here from the groundwater. There may be some other things called conductor up here that are shallow, just for the near-surface materials, but this is a quite important one. Next, and this is just a generic borehole, I show in a deviated drill, another borehole, this could go down many hundreds of meters, kilometers. And you put steel in it. This would be, in this case, production tubing, we'll call it. And then you fill that with cement, casing, sorry. And so you have steel casing going down, you then plug this end off, you fill all of that with cement, and this is what the geometry of the kind of a generic borehole would be. And this is just very simple. There can be more complex ones where there's more casing strings for greater protection, and...but that's a simple case. So the whole idea, right, is that you want to protect the groundwater here. Here, you don't want communication between different levels. Like there's, I said, there's brines up in here, and if there's oil down here, you don't want those communicating. So you're trying to seal a borehole as much as you can. Now, there's the protected groundwater. This might be a suggested depth that's going down beneath that, right, where you'd seal it off. This whole thing is supposed to be sealed, and this is where problems can arise, right? There can be corrosion of the casing, and that can cause leaks in that steel. The cement may not be properly put in, and you'd have gaps behind it in some cases where fluids could flow, and...or the cement could break with time. There's things that can go wrong, but properly, if this is properly done, it should seal that borehole in. And that's where some, you know, the regulatory work that maybe will be talked about later, how those, you know, we need to check these things, and there's different techniques you can try and check them. This is just a... This is just a, an example of what a simple vertical borehole would be. Again, here's our surface casing, we put the one borehole down and this arrow represents hundreds of kilometers of space and then we're going down towards the bottom. And here's our steel casing and we plug that with cement. Then the next thing that happens, usually regardless of whether you're doing hydraulic fracturing or not, you need to get the fluids that you want into the borehole, so you'll do what's called perforation. And that's, you actually put holes in that, that steel, right at the zones that you want to, to look at. And you can do that, you know, with explosives or you can do that by milling out holes right into the cement, there's, there's a variety of ways to do that. And then you have access to the earth. And in principle, again, we're supposed to be sealed, here's our zone of interest down here, everything should be sealed away from it as much as possible. Okay, now horizontal boreholes, this is what city council was worried about, some of the geometries. This is what a, a single barrier system it's called, right? It's basically the same borehole, but now we've kicked it off at a certain point and we've gone horizontally for a while. We seal off the bottom and in, these can get quite large, right? In, so here's a little cartoon, again, this could be hundreds of meters or kilometers, right? This horizontal part can actually go, you know, length of the bridge easily now, right? And extended reach ones that are in offshore cases are going eight kilometers or so away from the borehole. Then what's done is you perforate that in many different places. Again, this is down many hundreds of meters usually and you'd access the, the rock that you're interested in through these different perforations and carry out individual fracture, hydraulic fracture stimulations from, from each of these. So, and that can, they can get pretty large. Now, concerns, right? Again, contamination of groundwater has been one of the big concerns. And this is where, where care has to be taken, how these boreholes are completed. And I've just, I said there's, there is other types of boreholes where you'd have additional layers of casing for added protection and that can be done too. But basically, the important thing is how is that steel reliable that you put in? Is the cement reliable? Has it come up all the way that you need it to be where to isolate the aquifers from the oil, et cetera? Or various aquifers from one another? These could be brine aquifers that are quite down far, water that's, you could never drink, it could be many, many times out of seawater, right? And then particularly up here, you want to isolate anything that could leak potentially from here. And that's, that's probably the biggest risk. Another risk that I know people talk about here and is that could things come up this way? And the likelihood of that is much smaller. I already said there's these big layer layers, such as the Bear Paw that you can see from Paradise Valley, right? They're pretty impermeable. Those oils have been sitting there for millions and millions of years already. If those, if they hadn't been trapped by those shales, they wouldn't be there, they'd be gone because oil wants to rise, it's usually, and gas wants to rise. So, so the likelihood of things coming from deeper and coming through here is unlikely, unless you have natural features such as faults or that, that are going to be open all the way that you can find a conduit for fluids to flow. And whether you have that or not, in various cases, you have to study each individual case on its own. Okay, so it's, this is the important thing, the integrity of the steel casing and the cement. A lot of people put a lot of efforts to trying to make sure that those are in place because it's expensive if, if they're not. Okay, now, next thing that was asked to talk about was hydraulic fracturing. So, what is hydraulic fracturing? Here's our generic borehole, it's many hundreds of meters up there, maybe a kilometer, and we're basically going to be, have an open port to, to the rock here. And what we're going to do is we're going to put in, in fracking fluid. And mostly, this is sand and water. And there's other chemicals that try and keep it in a gel state and things like that. And I'm not the one who can know about the safety of the various chemicals put into the fracking, but, but again, most of it is sand and water. And the reason you're putting in sand is because you're going to create these fractures and you want the sand to go into the fractures and keep them open so that the fluids can flow out. So, now this is a really, I know, schmaltzy cartoon, so, but please bear with me, I'll hopefully get the point across. So here's a hydraulic fracture. What we do is pressurize the rock, and this could happen in many cycles or a few cycles. And this little cartoon, you can see there's kind of a fracture zone growing, right? And you see these little things? These are what are called induced seismicity. And these are small events produced by, we're breaking the rock, right? That's what we're doing. We're moving the rock around in two ways. In some ways, it's like we're taking an axe to it and splitting it right apart, okay? That's a tensional fracture. Other ways, you can see I've put some little events up there, right? The rock has already got natural fracture and it slips a little bit, okay? Like that. And that gives you an event. And those are going to happen regardless what you do, you're breaking the rock. And I'll talk more about those later because I know there's concerns. Okay, so that's how it goes. You build up a zone here where the rock is basically damaged, that means you've increased the porosity, you've pushed in the sand, the sand keeps the fractures apart and it keeps the permeability of those fractures. Because the earth is really pushing back, the earth is pushing back hard, it wants those fractures to be closed, okay? So you open them up, you've got to keep them propped one way or another. The forces in the earth are quite large. Now, just to give you, this is just a cartoon, but let me try and give you a scale and I can't give you any exact scale, but let's say that this could be on the order of 10 meters high, okay? And this could be actually many hundreds of meters in length, okay, with these various fractures, depending on what they're doing. Okay, come on. Now, here's a good question, where does the fracture go? And we'll come up, here's our little events. And this is how, you know, how do you study something that's down two kilometers and you know what's actually going on? And as a geophysicist, this is, is getting to be a bigger and bigger field. Where are these fractures actually going and how are they being produced? And so what we're doing is we put in seismometers around the fractures and we, we map out these little events as they're happening. And that's how you map out basically a cloud of these events and you can see how they're growing. So this is a side view, so that would kind of map out where we might think the fracture is actually gone, right? Did it go too high? Did it go too low? How far out has it gone? And it kind of helps us, if, you know, the fracture, you're going to have an event where the rock is actually breaking, so that's telling you where it's, it's going, okay? So we can map out where the fractures are actually going with that. Now, public concerns, geological risks. So I've mentioned breaking rock, right? And I know this is a concern. And so what is induced seismicity? And that's basically, we're breaking this rock, we call that induced seismicity. And anytime we break the rock, we get an event, right? And either in by like, as I said, like breaking wood is one mode or by having it slide past itself is another during that. And we pick those up and we can map them. And all these are, are pretty low events, okay? So many of them would be of the same energy level basically as if you took a sledgehammer and hit the, the ground. And this is quite large concern and I'll talk, at the end, I'll talk about this again, in urban situations in particular. The risks are probably pretty low, that's been studied by, by, you know, the American Academy of Sciences and there's studies coming out from our National Academy soon, but you are producing it. And so of course, people have, have concerns, well, and we'll talk more about that. So another question that has to come with this, is there natural seismicity? Do we have earthquakes here in Alberta? And we do, right? We don't have that many, it's a pretty quiet place, but there are zones where we get, to the south of us, Delbonita is an example, upwards a couple places near the, in Brisso area, for example, we're getting naturally small earthquakes. And the magnitudes on these, I hate to use magnitudes because it's hard for people to, to put that in context. But the magnitudes of these things are typically on what are called a magnitude four. And maybe a magnitude four is something where you'd actually start to feel something, okay? A lot of the induced seismicity that's produced by the hydraulic fracturing is down at negative magnitudes or magnitude one or magnitude two becomes, starts to become large. The largest that's probably ever been seen by hydraulic fracturing itself, not other activities, but hydraulic fracturing itself is probably about 3.9. And to actually be able to feel that would be quite difficult. We can sense these things with our seismometers, we can go down many, many orders of magnitude in the energy, but to actually feel them is another story. Okay, but we do have natural seismicity in Alberta and so that probably needs something being, to be established in an area that you, of concern. Okay. And can events be felt? From the hydraulic fracturing itself, probably not. At least so far that is experienced. So the experience has been in England where people were monitoring during events, came up with a magnitude 2.5, in which case they, they shut off the hydraulic fracturing. Europe has been, had a lot of this with geothermal prospects, actually, we're trying to induce better flows in fracture systems and again, none of the earthquakes have really been felt there, but they've shut off. Basel is the most famous place where the earthquake wasn't felt, but they stopped the injection for safety. So, so the, so far, no events have actually been felt from hydraulic fracturing in any great extent. Okay, let's go on. So here's just some final thoughts. I've kind of talked about some of the concerns about water, what can probably go wrong there, mostly to deal with the completion of the boreholes. Another one is with the geological risks. And groundwater, and so, you know, I think what's happening in other jurisdictions around the world is people are, are monitoring very carefully. We're pretty lucky here in Alberta, most of it's empty, right? But if you go to Europe and that, they're very concerned about carrying out some of these activities, not just from petroleum recovery, but for purposes of, of say, geothermal energy requirement, which may be something that Lethbridge might want to consider in the future even. But groundwater, of course, you want to protect that. And you should probably have something in place to monitor groundwater before things like this would go in. It might be a wise thing to protect yourself almost. Borehole integrity. We may hear more about borehole testing, you know, you pressurize these wells, they have to go to certain pressures, to be able to hold certain pressures. There's more advanced, what are called geophysical logging techniques, we can put into the boreholes to try and find where gaps are. All of those should be established and, and used. Geological risks, how could we reduce those? Basically, we need to probably have an idea of what larger features are and are there faults underneath Lethbridge? I have no idea, right? So, but people can find that out from using tech, geophysical techniques, looking at surface seismic and seeing what might be there. You can't detect them all, but, but these are things that probably should be looked at. You should really have a good understanding of what's happening down in, in the earth, right? What are the fluid pressures? What are the stresses in the earth? What kind of fracture system might be down there? And which way is it pointing, right? Things like that. And, and these are not just from a safe, help, public health and safety concern, I mean, if you're doing this economically, you'd want to understand this to get the best value out of your, your project. Probably want to know something about the background seismicity. And there's a lot, a lot of work going on in Alberta now, different groups, one of my colleagues at UVA, putting in network and University of Calgary, the federal government also putting in seismometers now to make sure that we're establishing this seismicity, right? But there has been reports come out recently from Alberta Energy Regulator that discussed seismicity over the last decade in Alberta. And finally, you probably, again, this, for the people who want to do projects like this, this probably has great economic value, but, but you probably want to know where that frac is going or not going. And so you should probably be doing this low-level seismic monitoring that I was talking about before, during, and after the event, just to see where the fractures were, how big they were, what kind of little events were produced. And so with that, I think I'll conclude and look forward to questions later. Thank you very much.
You'll probably notice that Dr. Schmidt knows a lot about Southern Alberta and that he's originally from the Milk River area, so kind of a homeboy as well, so appreciate that, should be noted. Our next issue is regarding regulatory framework and public safety, Mr. Bob Willard. Bob Willard has a long career with the Alberta Energy Regulator, AER, in areas of engineering, management, and decision-making involving a full cross-section of AER mandated decision-making involving all, mandated surface, mandating surface and subsurface responsibilities. Bob is a member of the AER Core Team for Unconventional Resource Framework and the Joint ESRD slash AER Water Management Working Team addressing how best to respond to challenges of expanding unconventional oil and gas development in Alberta. Throughout Bob's career, he has supported communicating Alberta-based oil and gas facts to Albertans, engaging opportunities, and alternate dispute resolution. Mr. Willard, thank you and welcome.
Thank you and good evening. I'm pleased to be included on this panel and have the opportunity to provide information to the council and in turn to this audience. I've been specifically asked to address the AER's regulatory framework with a focus on application process and public safety. Now, tonight I also have a few other staff from the Energy Regulator from both the Calgary office and the Medicine Hat Field Center. So would that, those staff please raise their hand? Thank you. Now, last year, the Government of Alberta formed and created a new energy regulator for this province. The mandate for this regulator is to ensure the safe, efficient, orderly, and environmentally responsible development of hydrocarbons over the entire life cycle. Now, to achieve or move this mandate into action, the regulator will strive to balance the social, economic, and environmental aspects. As the regulator for a life cycle, from basically the start to the end of life, we've had some number of additional responsibilities added to the traditional ERCB. These include the allocation and conservation of water resources, managing public lands, and protecting the environment as relates to energy development. Now, what I want to do is to maybe give you a very high-level summary of the eight critical parts of the regulatory framework that is applied in this province. I've been asked to address two of these in more detail, but it's important to understand the regulatory context and to recognize that all parts of this regulatory model must work and must work together, just not isolated pieces. So as Dr. Schmidt indicated, an information base is critical to start with. So you have to have an understanding of the geology, understanding of the various components. And in this province, over the last 75 years, Energy Regulator has got a very extensive database, and that's data in a public database. We also have information, say, and not only just geology, subsurface, but production, as well as groundwater, as well as seismicity, as Dr. Schmidt just indicated. We also have expanding capacity to monitor these events. Example of some of these things do include the recent changes in Directive 59, which increase the disclosure of frac chemicals in this province, as well as identifying and measuring water use and water sources. Now this is very important, for example, there's a wide range of fracking technology being applied throughout this province in different rock formations. So as a regulator, we need to be able to identify, track, assess, and monitor the Now, we also have a very comprehensive set of science-based, risk-based rules. All the rules of the regulator is on our website, they're publicly accessible by not only the industry, but also you members of the public and council. The applications, I'll get into this in a separate slide, I just wanted to highlight at this point that all the applications filed with the regulator is public, they're on our website, you have access to them. We also have sort of two pathways that we get applications. Routine is the most common, a company comes in with a very complete application, they come in with a signed surface lease and no outstanding concerns. We expedite that process of checking and approving, but we also have the backend audit and field inspections. Nonroutine would include cases in which a company is looking for variance from a technical rule and regulation, as well as coming to the
rule and regulation, as well as coming to the regulator saying that they've identified concerns with the public and other companies perhaps, they've tried to resolve them, and they're coming to the board or the regulator with a nonroutine application, there's outstanding concerns. In that regard, we have a number of tools for dispute resolution. Now, compliance assurance step five in here is very important. No matter how good the rules you have, you need boots to the ground to ensure compliance. We've basically been doing 12,000 to 13,000 inspections throughout this province per year. The field staff is charged with education, prevention, and enforcement. All the serious enforcement issues that we've identified, we basically post them monthly. We identify the offense, the company that we have the problem with, as well as the action to remedy those situations. Measurement and reporting, it's an intricate part of the model. Effectively, it's the tracking and reporting to stakeholders, including the council, including the public, as to what is the performance, what are we finding? Is those trends matching the outcomes that we've all agreed that we want in this province? Is there a need to relook at, revisit the regulatory requirements that we have? And finally, the regulatory requirements that we have are continuously being subject to review, and any regulatory change will include stakeholder input. This is a sample list. It's probably the main directives, rules, and regulations, if you will, for energy development in this particular area. They're quite extensive. We have rules and regulations on almost every component of oil and gas development. We have a long history of responding to new technology, new resource types, new risk, and ever-changing stakeholder expectations of the regulator. All these requirements, as I said before, are on the website. There's no surprises to industry as to what is expected and required of them. And once again, as part of our transparency is open all to the public, this is all on the website. The regulator's rules also must demonstrate and show alignment with government policy, environmental standards set by Edmonton, as well as strategic direction. In addition to the regulator's rules, industry and local synergy groups have also been active in looking at local best practices. So the application process, all the details are directed in, found rather, in Directive 56 for wells, new pipelines, new facilities. Parties who may be directly impacted or of an interest in land have rights. They have the right to know about a proposed development on their lands or their, in their community. They have the right to ask questions. The company is required to address those questions and concerns. They are required to make an effort to resolve them. In, before the ER, the AER actually receives an application, we have a pre-application process requirement of a future applicant. All companies do a lot of pre-planning, but it's critical that those companies engage local landowners, local residents, the local authorities to understand the local needs, to address misinformation early, use this information and local knowledge to improve their plans. The local authority, this council, for example, can be very helpful in ensuring a company understands the local issues, be aware of any local planning, advising perhaps on communication plans, and perhaps facilitating meetings between a company and your groups responsible for transportation, emergency services, et cetera. All of this happens before an application is filed with the regulator. This is the time that I would encourage the public to be informed, to share and voice their concerns, perhaps raise alternatives, and if you think it's necessary, to file statements of concern with the regulator. Even at this early stage, we record those, we keep them on file, and should a future application be filed, we would match that up to that future application. I just, before I leave this slide, the very bottom of this slide is what I tell companies in this process. I tell the companies to engage the public early, I tell the companies to be inclusive, I tell the companies to be flexible and open to change. The regulatory dispute resolution, we have been very successful in this province in getting all the parties together at the kitchen table, if you will. It's amazing what can be done when there's face-to-face communication, looking at the shared interests, the common interests that we all have. This has led to a number of resolutions, also led to some modifications in proposed plans, and in some cases, the companies choosing not to proceed because of the ADR process. So is it working? There's a lot of measures that you could use to, to address that kind of question. Tonight, I just chose this kind of statistical diagram. These are the applications we received at the regulator in the year 2012. 3,382 applications. All of those applications had some form of pre-engagement before they got filed with the regulator. Engagement continues after that filing. That's ongoing engagement can lead to further changes to an application, perhaps influencing a company to decide not to proceed, or perhaps fully resolving the issues that the, the public may have had. We actually closed over 5,000 applications. Should a company choose to modify their application significantly, we actually will close it and ask them to refile it. In that year, we actually only had 300 applications filed nonroutine with outstanding concerns from either other companies or the local residents and landowners. At that point, the regulator often encourages a ramping up of the ADR tool for dispute resolution. The pie diagram sort of shows the disposition of those 300 nonroutine applications filed in 2012. 105 were closed or withdrawn, so the company chose not to proceed at that point in the process. 177, basically, the issues were resolved. So they came to the regulator with some outstanding concerns, with more commitment, more pressure, if you will, on ADR, trying to resolve those issues between themselves without requiring the regulator to make the decision, resolved 177. 16 went to a hearing. Safety rules. It's very difficult to address safety rules in, in a few minutes, but I wanted to highlight this sort of list. And I wanted to also emphasize before we even start that these safety rules are backed up by field inspections by the regulator and emergency response teams. Setbacks, it's a very common tool used in the oil and gas industry and the regulator. It basically is a separation to ensure safety between an operation, drilling a well, for example, and an offset resonant. These are sort of risk-based minimums. So a company can choose, for example, to increase that separation. The council, for example, can choose to adopt a local increase to those setbacks. A setback for a sweet oil well or gas well is 100 meters. A level-two oil well or a gas well would be 500-meter setback. The setback for a level-one pipeline in this province is really the right-of-way itself. So you could build a building, basically two feet offset the right-of-way. Now, stakeholder engagement often includes discussion between these affected parties in areas of site selection and route selection. So I chose to put this in the safety rules because quite often, finding a better location than what was originally proposed does give you security of you, your family, and perhaps your community. Now, also, local authorities and a company can also go into this kind of discussion on site and route selection. There's a lot more flexibility today in drilling wells so that the surface location can be shifted where it makes sense to do so. Likewise, a number of communities have synchronized their plans so that a level-one pipeline right-of-way can actually be included in, in a project plan and a community plan to be, say, a green belt. Integrity of wells, pipelines, production facilities. Dr. Schmidt introduced this, certainly on the geological containment. There's a lot of rules and regulations in place to address the wellbore containment or wellbore integrity. The well itself can be a vertical pathway if you do not make sure that you have integrity of that well. So we have a lot of rules and regulations, we have a lot of capacity, especially now, to measure how well that integrity is, is there. We also are dealing with rules of hydraulic fracturing, including the fracturing to an offset well, and having that older well become the new vertical pathway. So we have a lot of rules and regulations dealing with the new risk being generated. We also have a lot of rules and regulations on emission management, managing noise. It's important that the company, the applicant, have contingencies, have protocols and plans to address things like emissions, like noise. The company has to select, say, a combustion technology and system that's suitable to the situation. And in this particular area, that technology would have to be suitable to high-wind conditions. So a system that might exist in another place may not work here. So we have to have the right equipment for this area. Now, urban drilling, I know has been on the, the press and is probably on the minds of many of you in this province or in this room here today. I just want to give some provincial context. There is about 650 producing oil and gas wells within urban centers in this province. Just as important, there's over 3,300 producing oil and gas wells immediately adjacent to those urban centers, basically a ring about 1.6, 1.6 kilometers around an urban center. So industry and the local authorities for many years have been wrestling with this topic. Every well is different, every land use situation can be different. So sometimes it may make sense to come and balance the local issues and the subsurface needs. In other cases, it may not make sense. This map is indicating many of the existing wells within the city of Lethbridge. There are 19 producing oil and gas wells within your community. There includes eight wells in the deep southwest corner of this city. They're part of this A pool that's existing in this diagram. There's also, for example, 13 abandoned wells. On setbacks to abandoned wells, we have rules in which it can be as small as five meters. We need access to older wells in the unlikely but possible case that they would leak. So not only is it just the producing wells the city and you as residents have to be interested in, you also have to be interested in the abandoned wells. So hopefully, I've given you a very high-level snapshot. As a panel member, I welcome the, the questions from the council as well as the audience later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. From public health, we have Mr., our Dr. Brent Friesen. Dr. Brent Friesen is the Lead Medical Officer of Health, supporting Alberta Health Services' safe and healthy environments and tobacco reduction programs. Dr. Friesen has been involved with health assessments related to oil and gas development in urban and rural settings. He was a member of the Public Safety and Sour Gas Advisory Committee, whose work resulted in 87 recommendations. Dr. Friesen is a specialist in public health and preventive medicine. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak this evening, and as Mr. Willard did, I also acknowledge that in the audience tonight, Dr. Sutorp, Medical Officer of Health from South Sloane is present, along with Mr. Dalzac, Manager for Environmental Public Health, and I know that there's other environmental health, Alberta Health Services staff present in the audience. So for my presentation, I'm going to just give some background in terms of the role of Alberta Health and Alberta Health Services, and then also close in terms of with some questions that I'd received from City Council. So this slide here describes the role of Alberta Health. And Alberta Health is responsible for overall policy as it relates to health within the province. They're the policy establishing and setting arm in that. They develop and implement environmental public health policies and actions on issues impacting on health. So while Alberta Health Services, our staff has a responsibility, for example, in enforcing the regulations related to food safety, to rental housing, the, the actual development of those regulations that we enforce is done by Alberta Health. One of the key individuals within Alberta Health is the Chief Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Jim Talbot, and he has a responsibility for monitoring the health of Albertans and making recommendations directly to the Minister of Health regards to matters affecting or impacting on the health of Albertans. I wanted to cover over, spend a little time talking about the role of Medical Officer of Health, including the Chief Medical Officer of Health, because I think there was some, has been some confusion created about the roles and responsibilities and the powers that Medical Officers of Health have under the legislation. Another responsibility that Alberta Health has is in regards to investigating health concerns related to oil and gas development within the province. And this is actually a shared responsibility, both with Alberta Health initiating actions or investigations, as well as actions or investigations can be initiated at the local level. On this slide, I will talk to the role of Alberta Health Services. And as I'd indicated earlier, Alberta Health Services has the, is responsible for delivering the services in accordance with the policies and regulations established by Alberta Health. Under key legislation that we operate under is the Regional Health Authorities Act, and there's an obligation under the Regional Health Authorities Act to protect and promote the health and well-being of residents within the province, as well as under the Public Health Act, there are specific requirements to investigate complaints of conditions where people are alleging that they are, their health is being adversely affected by an activity or release. And another area of responsibility, and it's spelled out under the Alberta Energy Regulator requirements, some of the directives that were referred to earlier, is in the review of emergency response plans submitted by oil and gas companies. There is a requirement for certain types of emergency response plans, particularly those related to sour gas oil and, oil and gas wells, that the emergency response plans are reviewed by public health, and we have an opportunity to provide feedback to the company on those emergency response plans. And if we have concerns that are not addressed in that dialogue and review with the company, then we can make that known to the, to Alberta Energy Regulator, and then Alberta Energy Regulator, though, has the final approval on those emergency response plans. And this is something that, within the South Sloane, that I guess almost on a weekly basis, there's a review of emergency response plan. Final point on this slide is the involvement in investigation of complaints that occur related to health complaints related to oil and gas development, and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. This next slide gives you a little bit of overview in terms of the capacity of both Alberta Health and Alberta Health Services. So within the Alberta Health and within Alberta Health Services, there's specialized expertise available. There's expertise, some of this expertise is available locally, so right within the South Sloane, within Lethbridge. South Zone, within Lethbridge and the other environmental public health officers. The environmental health officers have expertise in emergency response planning, expertise in air quality issues and responding to concerns related to drinking water. As well, we have specialized expertise within Alberta Health Services centrally to support the local environmental health officers and local medical officers of health. We do have a limited capacity for the actual laboratory analysis and testing of air and water. And for those types of tests, we actually rely on Alberta Environment and Sustainable Resource Development to undertake both the collection and the testing of those compounds. Sometimes we will use private laboratories to support us in the analysis. We do have the capacity within, there is a capacity within Alberta Health to test drinking water for bacterial and chemical, certain types of chemical contamination. The other resource that we have, and again draw on, depending on health concerns or issues that arise, is the epidemiological investigations. And what that refers to is the capacity, if health concerns have been raised, that a population is being adversely affected by a particular activity, not just oil and gas, but some other type of industrial activity. And that is to look in the health services databases for the utilization of the reasons why people are visiting their physicians and hospitals. It's done on an anonymized basis, so we don't look at the actual individuals, but overall number of reasons why people are presenting to the emergency department to see if there's an increase in the number of people reporting with heart attacks or with asthma, or if there's an unusual number of people going to their physician with skin rashes. So we would look at that health services database to see if there's any unusual patterns of illness and disease in the population. Similarly, in Alberta, there's a cancer registry where all, there's an obligation for physicians to report all cases of cancer that they diagnose and, diagnose and treat. And again, we would look to see if there's an unusual occurrence of cancers in a particular Again, these are some of the issues that, with the questions that were asked, there were some questions that were asked for Alberta Health Services to respond to. And these are some of the areas that are evolving. So the Alberta Energy Regulator is a relatively new entity in that. And what we're involved in, in conjunction with Alberta Health and ourselves, is looking at how we will be working with the Alberta Energy Regulator into the future. An example of that is the updating of a resource that our environmental public health officers use in responding to oil and gas issues. So the current manual is from, was last updated, I think, in 2007, 2008. And it's dated because it still refers to when there were separate regional health authorities. It refers to the existence of the Energy Resources Conservation Board. And so that's an example of the activity where we'll be working with Alberta Energy Regulator, Alberta Environment, and other interested parties to update and clarify the roles and responsibilities of the different agencies. There is a movement of some of the things, the areas that we rely on Alberta Environment and Sustainable Resource Development to support health in. Some of those responsibilities are moving to the Alberta Energy Regulator and will be, part of the discussions will be how we will work with them on issues into the future. There's also the development of the unconventional oil and gas regulation that deals with hydraulic fracturing and other related activities, and again, clarifying health's role in those areas. Finally, an area that's of interest to health is gaining a better understanding of the potential role that health impact assessments might play in looking at oil and gas developments. One of the points I didn't touch on in the role of Alberta Health is that Alberta Health does have a formal role in the review of environmental impact assessments that are required for large oil and gas or industrial developments, such as those occurring in the oil sands areas or major new mining operations that would be occurring. The health impact assessment refers to a more rapid assessment where you'd be looking at a particular proposal occurring, such as the play proposals that were referred to earlier, and looking if all these wells get developed in this geographical area, what are the potential health effects? What are the potential social impacts that would be occurring? Does it have impact on the, you know, what impact would it have on the roads, educational systems and that? So it gives a much greater idea of, you know, what would be the potential future issues affecting this, an area if there's large-scale development takes place in it. Again, this is just basically the process we follow through in terms of when we receive a complaint or concern coming into Alberta Health. If an individual expresses concern that their health is being adversely impacted by an oil and gas activity, then contact is made with that individual to get further information about their specific concerns. There's an assessment done in terms of the particular issues that you're, that is being raised and that, to determine what may be contributing to that. In that individual assessment, we would work with the individual's family, physician, and that to get further information. There may indeed to involve other physicians or specialists as part of the assessments. And then I'd mentioned earlier, if it's a group of people that is complaining of health concerns and it's felt that we need to do that type of assessment of the health status in a geographical area, then that will be undertaken. As well, at the same time, we would be engaging with other regulatory agencies, such as Alberta Health, Alberta Environment, Alberta Energy, and the Energy, Alberta Energy Regulator. Again, our actual regulatory responsibilities in these areas is limited. So for example, if there's concern about air quality emission or that coming from a particular activity, Alberta Environment and Alberta Energy Regulators are the ones that are responsible for regulating emissions. And so we would be working with them to understand what the concerns were and rather that particular plant or operation was in compliance with the existing regulations. These were some of the specific questions that came from council. So one of them was, what are the health effects of flaring hydrogen sulfide or H2S, sulfur dioxide or SO2 on humans and on animals? And fairly simple question, but actually complex to answer because it's going to depend the impact of flaring or combustion products. And what we're concerned about with flaring is actually the products that are coming out from that flare is through the burning process or products that are not being burned because the flare incinerator is not working properly. So it's going to depend on the efficiency of the incinerator. Again, the equipment that is put on a well has to have certain performance. Alberta Energy Regulator specifies those performance requirements for the equipment that is being used. So again, it'd be making sure that the correct equipment is being used for the application that it's intended. The exposure will also depend on the amount of product that is being burned and particularly what product is being burned through the incinerator. One of the concerns that some time raised in relation to incineration during hydraulic fracturing operations, and again, this isn't relevant to, to your specific situation, but maybe something that people have read about in terms of on the internet or other areas, is that if there's large amounts of liquids that are coming up and they're not being appropriately removed through separators that are intended to remove the liquids from the gases to allow the gas to burn, then those liquids can interfere with the efficiency of the incinerator and you can get compounds being released that are not intended to. So again, as the application, the, this particular well application is going forward, it would be important to understand what type of liquids are going to be, if any, are going to be flared or incinerated and the processes that are going to be used to make sure that they're safe and appropriate. The health risks that are experienced are going to depend on the duration that the, if flaring is occurring, the duration of the flaring is taking place. And again, one of the things that's important and one of the issues that we've recently dealt with outside of Calgary is a situation where in the initial well developments that were going into the area, there was limited pipeline infrastructure. And so the wells were flaring and nearby residents were complaining of effects from those wells during the flaring phase. Now they've built in the pipeline structure and so the period of time or duration of flaring has been significantly reduced. And so again, I understand for this particular well, there's an existing pipeline system that they can be tied into, so that should not be an issue. But certainly, if there's other types of these type of well applications coming in, would be important to understand if there's going to be prolonged periods of flaring Okay. And then just in terms of the question about what are the health effects of H2S and that, again, hydrogen sulfide has a very low order threshold in the parts per billion. So I'm something, it's a rotten egg smell, and I'm sure everyone in the audience here has smelt that from time to time unless you happen to be one of those people that doesn't have the ability to smell it. As the concentration of hydrogen sulfide increases, it affects the respiratory system, causing irritation. And at very high levels, type of levels that you'd potentially see in an occupational setting, if somebody working on a well site with hydrogen sulfide, it can cause an individual to lose consciousness. And at those high levels, if they're prolonged and not retrieved from that, it could, could result in death. SO2, again, it's a respiratory irritant. There's, people who have asthma are sensitive, will be more sensitive to it than individuals who do not have breathing problems. The other thing that is relevant to SO2 is that, and it comes up in situations where you're dealing with sour gas wells, and again, that's not relevant to this particular proposed well in Lethbridge. But if you had a sour gas well that was producing high concentrations of H2S, one of the control measures that Alberta Energy Regulator will require in emergency response plans is for the operator to ignite the well to prevent the concentrations of H2S that may cause health effects on surrounding residents from occurring. And when they do that, it produces sulfur dioxide. Positive thing is the sulfur dioxide rises into the air, so there's immediate protection for the close residents, but it can settle down as it cools and impact on areas further away. Again, Alberta Energy Regulator, as part of the emergency response plans, requires the operator, if H2S or SO2 are concerned, to carry out the specific modeling and provide that as part of the emergency response plan. Finally, on here, I've included some linkages to Alberta data, special reports that Alberta Health has produced on hydrogen sulfide and H2S, as well as references from the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registries with the Centers for Disease Control in Atlanta and with the Carex Canada, which is a coalition of cancer agencies across Canada looking at factors contributing to cancer. I thought it was important to identify these, particularly for members of the audience, because again, it's important when you go to the web to get information that you're going to sites where there's been a process of peer review so that you're getting accurate and reliable information. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Dr. Friesen. I appreciate everyone's patience. I know we're a little behind schedule, but I think it's important that everyone has the full time to do their presentations. And am I correct that Mr. Green and Mr. Cornfirth, you'll be doing your presentation together? Am I correct? Or you're separate? Separate occasion, I want to make sure because you're chief and it's a separate item, you're combined with Mr. Green, but that's all right. Our next presenter will be Mr. Jeff Green, who's responsible for, we can be talking about the municipal responsibilities and jurisdiction. Jeff Green is Director of Planning and Development for the City of Lethbridge and has a wide array of planning experience in urban, suburban, regional, and rural environments over the past 23 years. Jeff is also an instructor in planning at the University of Alberta and the University of Lethbridge. Previously, Jeff has served as Manager of Planning, Part of Parks and Sustainable Development for the City of Eridry, Development Officer for the City of Edmonton, and Senior Planner for the City of St. Albert, and as a Regional Planner at the Regional Planning Commission in Alberta. Jeff has a Master's in Business Administration from Royal Road University and a Master's in Regional Planning and Resource Development from the University of Waterloo. Welcome, Mr. Green.
Thank you. Thank you, members of council and the community for attending tonight. I wanted to take a step back and actually bring it down to a little bit around Lethbridge and specifically the southwest to express some of the reasons why perhaps some of these concerns were raised with, within city administration as well as within the community. This map represents Lethbridge circa 1999. So following this area up here, and I apologize for the, apparently yellows don't show up on these. But if you follow this area up here, this is essentially varsity. This is mountain heights. You get down to this part of the city, mountain heights is here, rather. You don't see any of Riverside or Riverstone, rather, and you don't see anything west of the boundary, which is essentially the future Maiti Trail. That area of the city is 19, this is 1999, as I said. This represents the boundary of the City of Lethbridge back in 1984. So Riverstone is in this area right here and Sunridge is down here. So in 1984, the City of Lethbridge actually undertook an annexation process with the County of Lethbridge. That process started a few years prior to 1984, but essentially lands were annexed into the city in all quadrants of the city. But in the southwest, it essentially represents all of this area in here. So some of the oil wells that were referenced earlier, it was made reference to the fact that there are 19 producing wells in the city. A number of those wells actually took place prior to the city actually taking on ownership or not ownership, rather, jurisdiction with respect to the southwest of the city. Not all of them, a number of them actually occurred afterwards. But you heard earlier that there are 19 producing wells. I can tell you that in this part of the world, there are 14 of those. Eight of those are actually in the river valley. And then there are six that are above on the plateau. These ones up here and here and here, they are all abandoned wells. So those wells that are no longer producing. One is actually recently suspended, as I understand it. So in 1999, the city had- So, in 1999, the city had grown to include those areas that I referred to earlier, mountain heights, varsity, Indian battle heights, and there was no other growth that was taking place. Riverstone had not started, and neither had Copperwood, so there was little concern with respect to what was happening west of the city at that particular point in time. There was little policy with respect to oil and gas well development as it, as is currently the case, there is also no requirement or ability of the municipality to put into place restrictions or land use considerations that were contrary to the authorization that might be provided by the Alberta Energy Regulator for drilling activity. Bob had mentioned earlier that application process in front of the AER can either be a routine or a nonroutine process. Almost all of these wells in this particular part of the world are routine. They were actually, there was few objections that were raised at the time, or statements of concern. There was also less concern about the activity since the proposed wells were almost all standard drilled wells, there was nothing unusual with respect to the technology that was being used, and I would also point out that most of the wells in the plateau are sweet, sweet gas wells. So, in terms of setback requirements for sour components, there was no setback requirements. It also appears that at the time, going back through some of the historical records, that there were commitments made from the oil and gas companies at the time that they produced for about 10 years and then essentially would suspend the use of those wells, and one of our concerns was that that was 15 years ago, so the timelines seem to have, it can be extended, as long as they're producing, they'll continue to produce. So, what did take place, and I have reference, it's pretty hard to see up here, is this well was 1994, this was 1997, so was this, then you had a well that was further south that was 1998 and 2000 over here. Those wells were, as I mentioned, put into place because there was no policy, we're also, most of the wells were also bottom one points, kilometer or more away from any urban development. Now, what changed at the time, and if we can maybe change the map, in 1997 about, the city started to look at planning for growth. The 90s were fairly slow with respect to urban growth, but in, starting in the late 90s, growth started to pick up the pace a little bit, there was a lot more demand for it, so the city started to actually plant for some of the lands that had subsequently been or previously been annexed into the city. And what you see on this map is what has changed since that time. So, to provide some context, in 1999, the city undertook the planning and approvals process for Riverstone. So, Riverstone was actually put in place in 1999, and it followed an earlier review of all the development in this part of the world, which is called the Riverview, Mountain Heights, Sunridge area, structure plan area. So, Riverstone started in 1999 and it's actually nearly finished, it's in its final phases of development right now, so it's taken, it's taken a good 15 years to complete this part of, part of the community. In 2004, you saw Sunridge was actually planned out and put into place, and Sunridge is also nearly completed in terms of urban development. Going up to the top of the map, you can see up here, this is the crossings, I believe that was 2006, but I can't see it from here, so the crossings took place there. Then you had Copperwood in 2010, the first stage of Copperwood, and then the second stage of Copperwood, which is 2012, where actually now we're starting to move down into this part of the world. And in terms of this piece of land here, this is called Waterbridge, we're actually in the process right now of putting this area structure plan into final formatting so it can be considered for some public, into the public process, it's still right now in the draft phase. So, what's changed since the earlier map where you saw some of these wells were put into place is that the growth in West Lethbridge has taken on a very different form, and it's occurred at a much more rapid pace because, A, urban growth is occurring in most jurisdictions because rural depopulation and urban growth are realities, and we're seeing the fastest growth that we're seeing in West Lethbridge. So, one of the reasons that the city brought, or the administration brought some of these wellsite applications forward to city council to have the discussion around what are the potential implications, our concerns, at least from a municipal approval standpoint, were less around some of the things you've heard from these gentlemen, because I'm not a scientist and I don't know very much about fracking and some of the technologies that are required to actually explore wells, but from a municipal growth perspective, one of the concerns that was raised is that when you start dealing with infrastructure and pipelines and wellheads and other features in the landscape, it can have an influence on how you design your communities. You heard one of the comments earlier that municipalities can increase the setback requirement from what the AER has as a standard for a sour gas well of 100 meters. Well, one of the challenges for a municipality is we also have limited abilities under our rules and requirements to take land for the purposes of setbacks or park space or pipeline right-of-ways. We have limitations under the act that say, well, we can take 10% of the land for parkland, but to put it all into covering off pipelines means you won't have school sites. So, there are limitations that we have to work with, and the only alternative to that, if you want to extend the municipality's ability to increase setbacks or add right-of-way space or green space for pipelines, is essentially to say, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna take that, or we're gonna buy it, or we're gonna set it aside, and then there's an impact on, on the cost associated with that, which comes back to the local taxpayer, so that's one of the concerns that, that we raise with respect to that process. So, it was, it was with this kind of context in mind that originally when the applications started rolling in new ones, because there hasn't been one since, as I mentioned, since 2000, that we brought this forward to city council to say, there are some, there are some things that you might want to take into account, some of the implications, and, and those were specifically around the development process and how land is developed in the city. So, where we're at right now, just in summary really, is when these wells were first put into place, they, they weren't anywhere near urban development, as urban development is starting to take place, we're starting to bump into each other. And so, the question becomes, does one take priority over the other, or do they have to find a way to exist, coexist together? But that was the reason for bringing it forward from our perspective anyways. That concludes all I have to say, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And our last presenter is Chief Brian Cornforth. Brian Cornforth is the Chief of Fire and Emergency Services for the City of Lethbridge. Brian has a broad range of fire and ambulance experience gained from 29 years of experience with work in Jasper, Coldale, Eridry, and Lethbridge. Starting as a volunteer, he moved through the ranks into his present position. Brian is responsible to ensure the City of Lethbridge's emergency planning is complete and that the city's resources are prepared for any emergency, any major emergency event. Brian is also the President of the Alberta Fire Chiefs Association and works closely with Government of Alberta ministries responsible for community safety. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members and public, thank you for coming and joining us tonight. I'll just give you a brief overview of how we prepare ourselves for emergencies within the municipality, and I'll talk a little bit about specific incident responses particularly to the oil and gas sector and our participation in some of the planning that takes place in any time a well site is brought online. We'll talk a little bit about the emergency planning zones, we talked about Directive 71, which is an AER requirement, formerly ERCB, as well as what our coordinated response would look like from a perspective of a joint response in the event of something happening at a well site, and then just the responsibilities of transportation of dangerous goods in So, each municipality in Alberta is required to have a major emergency plan, we take a look at all the risks of the community, everything from weather events, tornadoes, flooding, industry specific, whether we have oil and gas sector, we have a manufacturing industry that's a high-risk industry that could cause potential for explosion or serious threat to life or health. We work cooperatively with many different agencies to establish plans for the community that deal with those specific events. So, as we can categorize to the best of our ability what could happen, this is when things go wrong in the community, we work very closely with the, the AER group as well, we had input onto the Directive 71 across Alberta, so that's the requirements where you have surface development near oil and gas. Surface development means residential or industry or commercial property up near well site. We also have key partners, we work with Brian Dalshag from Alberta Health Services very closely with Medical Officer of Health, when it, anything to do with, with your health or, or safety in the community, we work with allied agencies, federal government agencies, as well as our provincial ministries, both from environment response side as well as our forest protection group as well. So, the idea is to establish a response and recovery plan, something you may be quite familiar with from the events this past summer, watching our, our friends in High River that has suffered the loss of our flood, the flooding in their community, what our focus is primarily life safety, so it's to go in and rescue people. We may establish evacuation requirements at that point if it is available to us as an option, so one of the questions that has come up is, is it reasonable to shelter in place? And that depends on what is the product or, or what is the airborne contaminant that we're worried about getting into your life, into your quality of life and your health. So, we would look at that, if we can, we would stabilize the risks, so if there was a way to minimize the leak, contain the leak, and/or stop whatever was occurring if we had the, the potential to do that within our own resources, being the city or with cooperation from an allied agency. When we had the wildfires, we worked with many different agencies connected to the city, we had seven different large departments plus the, the aircraft bombers with the fire retardant, so those are the things we would take in to try and minimize the risk and, and contain and stabilize the risk. We create response plans based on the incident. As you know, the city's quite large, 127 square kilometers of land surface, and incidents can occur in many different places. Fires can approach us from the north, they can approach us from the west and south, we can have an aircraft incident, so it's very difficult to specifically pick a target area, but we'll talk a little bit about that based on a well site type of a plan. So, we deal with health and safety and security, primarily it's to make sure that you can leave your home, leave safely in good health, and retain good health while you're away from your home, and that's, our requirement is to support you when you're away from your home and/or when you're in sheltering in place. And then we work on developing a recovery plan, that may include short-term, immediately in the next day, next week, month, and even in years, as we're seeing in the case in High River. And what the intention is, is to return our community to a normal status, so as you left your home, the intent would be to bring you back into that same home with the same conditions you had prior to. Specifically, emergency planning zones, and now this is the area around a well site, and I have a little diagram that I'll show you in a minute that just talks about it, and this is where we see Directive 71, particularly to a well site. So, anytime we have a well that they've determined as a risk well, or a well that is rated by the AER, as a requirement to have emergency response planning done on that well site, they're very, very specific criteria, and they deal with the people that are in that immediate zone. So, how would we contact them if there was an event, and it's primarily the responsibility of the, the well site lease owners. So, they are required to come up with a plan that if you're in that emergency zone and the well site is at of risk, meaning there's a hydrogen sulfide risk, leak risk, that you would be required to be notified immediately based on the level of risk to your health. So, from that, we would establish the notification process, and that might be, the well site operator would have to actually go to your residence, notify you of an event and/or of a risk that you may have to leave with your family, and each specific residence that's within that surface developed area, based on the risk of a well site, would have to be notified immediately when it's a high-risk well. So, this is high-level H2S or any potential risk for explosion. The city would also use our emergency alert evacuation and someone's, you know, what do we do at nighttime? Well, again, that defaults back to the original plan from Directive 71, the well site operator must have a method to notify you if you're within that planning zone immediately, if the well site's at what we deem a high risk. So, again, that's high-risk H2S well site release. And anything that we do, we try and work very closely with industry, and you'll see around areas that are surface developed areas and communities where well sites are very close to the community edge on the urban side, they actually work at developing those emergency response plans directly with us. We would do a tabletop exercise, particularly where we have a high-risk well site, we did a couple near Calgary in the MD of Rockview several times, preliminary practice, 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 what would happen if we had to enact an emergency response plan. And also the operator, if they are required to go through a zone of H2S during their drilling, they would give us about 96 hours, it's a requirement in the act that says that we would be notified while they're going through that zone, as they drill through that zone. So, we're both on awareness at the municipal level at the emergency planning site, as well as their well site requirements for additional air monitoring, that type of thing. And I'm sure Bob will correct me if I'm wrong with any of the notes. So, okay, the yellow doesn't show up very well. That circle inside is yellow, and this is called your emergency planning zone, so this is a zone around a well site, if you will, the center of that would be a well site. Based on preliminary information that they would get from their geologist and hopefully some seismology work that they've done, they would know what they're going to encounter as they drill the well. So, from that and the science that Bob has mentioned, they would establish an emergency planning zone, and in that planning zone, we would have, if there's surface developments, say there's 100 residents or 1,000 residents in there, they would have to come up with a methodology to deal with notification. So, where it is determined is in that Directive 71, it's not determined by the municipality of how that zone is set, that's done in that directive, and it's based on what the well site information is, what's down the hole. So, what's down the hole could come up, and then it would be emitted into atmosphere, and it would affect someone's health and wellness. So, they establish that, it's a release rate of hydrogen sulfide, from that point, the release rates then establish what is the risk to the public that's in that zone. Now, those zones can range anywhere from 10 meters to 100 meters to a kilometer dependent on the well risk, and low-risk wells are very, very small, narrow zones, emergency planning zones. The area, initial isolation zone typically is the well site itself, so that would be any equipment on the well site, any contractors or anyone working on that well site, it's very small zone. The area around it that we'd be most concerned with is prevailing winds or winds on that event day would be the protective action zone, so immediately the operator of the well site is required to, one, notify us at a release, secondarily is to go into that zone and make sure people know that there's a risk. And when it is a high-risk well, they actually practice this and they have very advanced technologies where they do auto dialing, they would dial up residents until they actually had someone physically either answer the phone or they had confirmation no residents were in that area. So, they're required to go in with the air packs on if that's the, the level of risk and make sure those residents are evacuated. Now, I'm speaking very much to the most hazardous condition of a well site. Well sites range from anywhere of, as I said, 10 meters to hundreds of meters to kilometers for that emergency planning zone. So, what happens when we have an event? And that can range anywhere from an industrial fire on the well site or to an actual release on the well site. The operators under Directive 71 are required to notify the municipality, so we would get that information, we have that all predetermined in telephone numbers, we would activate our emergency response plan here in the city, we would notify mayor and council, we would act an emergency, state of local emergency, which gives us extraordinary powers to go in and evacuate, control zones, and provide a, a much higher level of response as a municipality, as well as it links to the province for their support, and as I mentioned, all our allied agencies would be in contact with us in the Emergency Operations Centre. So, that's Alberta Health Services is immediately linked into us, we're sharing the same information. What it also does is it requires the well site to provide someone to us as a subject matter expert. Now, we have access to subject matter experts, again, as mentioned by Dr. Friesen, is we can access anybody that's a subject matter expert, not just from the, the oil and gas sector, but from a public health safety perspective. Air monitoring units are to be provided when the well site is a potential high risk, so the well site operator is required to provide their own air monitoring onsite in situ as they go through those zones. So, I said those high-risk zones, if they're drilling through those zones, they're required to have air monitoring. We also have air monitoring tied into our hazardous materials response team here in Lethbridge, and we have something that's a plume dispersion analysis software. So, what it is, if there's a release from a well site, we put instruments out in the field that sense weather, wind, sun, solar radiation, and it picks up all of that information and establishes what we think is how far that plume will go based on the well site information and the release rate. So, we can actually try and establish how far that plume of, oops, gas will go, and we can actually help in evacuating where we need to first and then moving people to safety if there's a requirement for that. Incident command for the entire event falls underneath the responsibility of the city, that's us at the fire service, we would make sure that all things that were coordinated from- from that wellsite are managed by the city. So the operators are primarily responsible for that emergency planning zone that I mentioned, everything else becomes a responsibility of the municipality, and we have the authority to make decisions. So it's not entirely up to the wellsite operator what happens off their wellsite, it's up to us, and it's a very cooperative effort amongst all agencies that are, that are responding as well. I'll just talk a little bit about the transportation of dangerous goods, and the reason this bylaw lives with us is because dangerous goods make us anxious, and we are the ones who end up responding. So any dangerous good is a product that you would see placarded on a transportation wheel or rail or aircraft, that you may see go through the City of Lethbridge. So you'll see a placard that says orange explosives, and there's a number associated to that, that would fall underneath this bylaw, if you're going off of a truck route or dangerous goods route in the city, and I'll have a map in a minute to show you where those are. So we actually issue only about 80 of these permits a year, and they range everywhere from the folks that are delivering welding gas, right up to the crop, herbicide, pesticide chemicals, some of the other fertilizer products, or corrosives or organics. So things like drilling mud, unless they're classified under one of those nine classifications, or fracking fluid, or any of those things, unless they're classified within one of those nine classifications, they would be transported on a truck route in accord, in accordance with our bylaw for truck routes in the City of Lethbridge, which is another bylaw. This one primarily focuses on the control of dangerous goods on our streets. So we'll deal with an operator who has maybe 15 trucks, and they'll go to different oil sites across southern Alberta, and they'll do a circuit, if you will, and they may pick up at one wellsite two or three times a week, or they may pick up once a day, depending on what the, the rate of return on that well is. Some of the wells that were mentioned by Jeff, they're a lower rate, so they're not a frequent, a frequent wellsite visit, so it's, it's an infrequent visit, but you will see oil and gas trucks in that southwest area of Lethbridge, as well as coming up from the south, out of the Cardston area on Highway four and five from the south. But also, we see a lot of dangerous goods come through on our rail, and on Highway three, through our corridor up through the US. When you travel on a highway, those routes are designated dangerous goods routes, they don't require a permit. If you want to go off-road, you have to have a permit. Now, you're my best investigators out there, if you see vehicles that are strange and have a placard and they're parked in your neighborhood, let us know, let Lethbridge Regional Police know, and quite seriously, we'll follow that up directly to make sure that they have a permit, or why are they parked there. No dangerous good should be parked on a residential street, either empty or full, and their placard are empty as well. This map doesn't show up very good, but I'll do the best I can here with my laser pointer. The green is actually the dangerous goods route, so that's Highway through, Highway three through the city, heading east towards Coldale, and then 43rd coming up, as well as Highway four and Highway five are all designated dangerous goods route. Where we have dangerous goods routes in the city are on the west Lethbridge, University Drive area. Now this is if we have to close off the Highway three bridge, if there's an accident or anything happens, we have to reroute traffic off of the highway, deal with the accident, and then reroute traffic back onto the highway in the, in the event of. Now, if you want to go off of that green route with your dangerous goods, you, you require a permit, you need that from our offices, as well as when you're on these truck routes, these are designated, the red lines, that don't show up very good, are all designated truck routes, they're under another bylaw, which we regulate, we don't want large transport trucks off of streets in the city that, that aren't built for those trucks, so they don't make corners, they're too heavy for the roads. Where Jeff mentioned, there are a couple of wellsites down in this quadrant here, we do bring the dangerous goods up, and we take them down University Drive, and it's an infrequent occurrence, at certain times of year you may see more, depending on what they're doing on the wellsite, but very good operators and haulers that we've worked with throughout the years, dealing with any oil and gas. We also have oil and gas, remember, is delivered to all of our fuel bulk stations, so in our community neighborhood gas station, those, those routes are actually established for that, and once they go off those routes, they require permits as well. So you'll see a truck that's anywhere from 19, 19 and a half meters long, that's the main trailer with a small pup behind it, coming into your neighborhood station, they have a permit, and, or they should have a permit.
Thank you. Very much, Mr. Chief Cornforth. Now I know a lot of you folks have been sitting in those chairs for quite a while, and when you do, you're usually seeing Mr. Carlson dance on the stage, so I thought we'd give you guys a little bit of a break, kind of break away from our agenda here, we'll take a 15-minute break, and then when we do come back, we'll go from questions from members of city council, and then we'll go to questions from the audience, as well as the written questions that have been submitted. Hopefully that works for everyone, and I appreciate your patience.